You're live.
All right, we will get started on our budget work session. I don't think we should start any meeting without asking the good Lord, blessed is he.
Yes, thank you, let us pray. Your gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for your many blessings upon us and upon our country. God, we thank you for all that you do for us. And God, I just ask that you would bless each one of us tonight, God, to give us the wisdom, or to make the right decisions for our community as we work through this budget, and or into our regular agenda items. And I pray that you would disguise and be with us. And more, we just continue to ask that you would look upon us with favor in your land. In Jesus' name we ask and pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My apologies for not having finished, but appreciate it, always.
You're doing pretty good, man, you worked overtime. I wasn't very far ahead of myself. Running in and out of fiber optics, going in and out.
I just needed to change clothes and grab something to keep my clothes from rolling.
Makes you feel like Superman, never mind, and just have fun, but. Everybody go through it, find about 20,000.
On revenue or?
Freight bringers will cut it, so.
Yep.
Has state done anything? Has state done anything?
I haven't heard anything, not what they've said.
All I heard was there's another meeting in July.
Would it be too late for us?
Yep.
Go over the updates from last meeting if you'd like, questions you all had. We were asked about recycling bin, we had $8,000 in there for that, and that will fill one bin. We all said if you need, if you cut that out, they're going to try to repair all the ones that we brought back in while they had them over there. Couple of guys are very handy can do that, so if you need to take that 8,000 out, we can.
Was there a replacement, is it new?
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, so we wouldn't be losing any sites.
Is that what we gain, any?
That's on page 34.
As much as I hate to see that go.
8,000, 8,000.
And you asked me to speak with the building official about the library parking lot. You know, if we could do it in stages, patch it, fix the holes or whatever. He said it shouldn't have been done last year. He's afraid if we keep waiting, that we're going to end up digging up two or three feet of asphalt. But of course, that's your all's decision, what to do with it.
Where it keeps settling, that's softing up.
You know, the water pumps in the back there, freezes, buzz.
If we could have been sure you knew that gun, I could get a fifth cord down, dug it out and filled it up.
But you all had left that in there, so that is still.
We only left 25,000, not the full of them, if I remember.
Yeah, I think we took that.
Yeah, we cut half, this copy says 50.
How you review them all?
21.
21.
Yep, this says 50. All right. Do you want another pen? I know what it is, that's a really good pen, but they all do that.
If you would consider leaving it in there, that's not something that we would have to do July 1. Delay that until we see how our revenues are flowing.
Yep.
And then Mr. Booth had asked about literary loan and other loans for the school project. If they were 15 or 20 years, but they're already 20-year loans.
Okay, that's a good question.
She and the dark.
Well, we don't know until we ask, right?
That was all the three things I had written down from last time, Mr. Chairman.
It was already in this, right? So that didn't change anything.
I'll take this one home and fix it. Yeah, I got some. It's a design. I'd say something, but I won't. Can you see that? Yeah.
I believe there was confusion last time, too, about the debt service. For the 7.5 million, that debt payment was already in the budget. We do not have the additional seven in it, because we won't be drawing it down in this upcoming fiscal year. So the 7.5 that y'all already paid.
The 7.5 that we've already done for the building, not for the AC.
No, the AC's in there. And the CCDC.
It's both in there.
They're both in there.
They're both in there.
Yep, because they were two separate.
But we would need an additional, potentially additional revenue to support the next seven if we.
But not in this.
Not in this budget, be the following budget.
But this budget is not on 57 cents, this budget is on 60 cents. So a three cent increase.
Three cents this year and three cents next year.
Unless it works out, you know, if they get some good proposals for refinancing or that type of thing.
Right.
So what's the potential impact for next year, though, next year's budget?
Well, it's hard to know at this point with, until they get those proposals, to see what's our best route.
Still, still looking at possibly a three cent in the spring for the other part of the project.
So it could be a six cent increase.
Over two years.
Over two years.
Over two years. But what do you mean by the spring, the spring of 2021?
This time next year.
Right, right. For the next budget cycle. So six cents.
The one we started in January.
Right, yeah, so six cents.
When we started, six months.
So six cents over two years, tax increase, possibly.
Of course, we was already looking at that, tax, right?
Well, we had, what we had discussed was three cents for the school project.
Right. And that was before we knew what our reassessment was going to bring us, which brought us three more cents.
Well, it doesn't bring us three cents, because we have to.
Well, we have to approve that.
Reassessment just is reassessing.
Values.
Values, it's not setting a tax rate.
Right, but that's what we do, and if we go with this budget, we're increasing taxes by three cents. And then asking for another three cents next year, so a total of six cents over two years.
I think, I guess my fear is, is that the great unknown of what the economy's going to do. I guess by doing this budget, then we commit to having to have a revenue increase next year, so. I would, I would very much prefer to have as much of the revenue in for the total amount of the school project in this budget, even if it means a larger contingency this year, which then we wouldn't necessarily need next. If we, if we ran, let's say, a cents worth more in contingency that we wouldn't need next year, it would give us a little bit, I'm not explaining this for a while.
Instead of three cents, if we did four cents, that put the majority of it in this budget.
Or if we trimmed a cent out of the budget now, it would give us some more leeway. If we did, if we did 60 cents, and we tried to get another 150,000 into contingency, it would.
From cuts.
It would give us a little bit more leeway going into next year, depending on what. I just, there's so much unknown, I just don't know what to.
You know, you still have your budget stabilization, so we don't have anything coming out of there.
That money's in the, actually in front balance, because it is in the report that somebody else who's a vibrate man. Well, if we bring that budget stabilization forward, that's, that's a little over a penny, is what we're trying to.
We have 194,336.
A penny is about 189.
But we didn't use the current years.
Right, which is.
That's in, that's, what we're looking at there is from the next budget.
Did you hear what's in it, or thing? I want to say it was like 400.
Because the current year, we didn't prep, we didn't bring that forward, we didn't put it in, it just went in front balance.
It was just, we've been just holding.
And it's been there.
Right.
So, you know, if we want to, we bring 194, and then back into this budget.
So with this 194, well, that was from 19.
That's from 19, that's a whole different.
That's a whole different one.
Yeah.
We, we put, several years ago, we had put, make sure I'm right about this, we had put some of that money in the budgets, but never had to actually draw it down, so that's why.
We put like 200, didn't we?
No, we put 194.
It's been, right.
Different amounts.
Right. But that's like 200, yeah.
Because our revenues.
To the woman who does the numbers, it's 200.
Because in 18, it wasn't in there, then in 19, we put 194.
Right.
So if you look at the revenue side of things, we actually need to look for the.
Right.
Front balance. 427,000. Right, where do you see that?
Well, that was in 19, board approved.
Which page is that?
Uh, 9. Well, that was a withdrawal.
In 19, we had that in, then we had the 194, but that 427 should be pretty close to what we have.
Right, it's very close.
Okay.
But when that's gone, it's gone, it's not a continuing source.
Right, and there may be unexpected.
But that is a good point, if we didn't use it this year, that would be there next year to. If we had a rough year, that would certainly swing without.
Absolutely. Right.
Long by a year.
They spent it all in a year, leave it all by a year. Took a long time to build up, couple of years was supposed to get there.
Is it?
Let's see, data report was, come to y'all's meeting on May 12, update you all on RFP results, too, so that still gives us time to.
We still live the window.
Advertise.
But at that date, but we really need to be looking at making some kind of decision at that point, after we hear from them, so.
I know that three cent increase sounds like a lot, and it is. Mr. Coleman and I were looking at, just trying to get some averages yesterday, you know, from a hundred thousand dollar house, you know, at 57 cents, that's $570. You know, you go to 60 cents, that's $600, so.
Yeah.
About 30.
Yeah, it's up 30, but somebody who's lost their job, it's, you know, the overall average for the county,
the increase in value was 4 percent. We looked at houses in different areas of the county yesterday, and most of them were 2 percent, around the 2 percent range, increase in value. Except for mine, I don't know why, it was 20-some percent.
You're welcome.
On the land use and conservation easements, and I may not be saying this term correctly, has anybody reviewed, they call them a SLE Act, is that what they use, that formula? See, maybe we could get to see how that's going to impact on the people in that.
That takes a big chunk out of our.
Well, I know it takes a big chunk out, but I meant with, with, are, are, is there any indication to increase those evaluations per, per hundred? I think the high one was like 850 and low 350 at one time, but I don't know what they are now, but.
I have not spoken to the commissioner about this, but I can.
Because I guess, and it's hard for me to recall all this from year to year, so excuse me if I ask a bunch of dumb questions, but basically, if a farmer right now is paying 60 cent per, based on that, say it's $800 per acre, with the new assessment, we do the tax increase, it's still going to be 60 cent per the $800, isn't it?
Yeah, I'm not sure how that works.
Well, see, that's what I'm trying to remember, I knew at one time, and I can't, every year, if I ask these same questions, I need to write it down somewhere.
So what you're saying is, it wouldn't be a tax increase on certain properties.
Right.
Right.
That's a good point.
If, if, if those are conservation easements and land use.
Because that, that rate is set.
That rate is set by that SLE Act formula, whatever.
Right.
They say it's valued at X amount no matter what.
No matter what.
It's X amount no matter what. Well, actually, if we owned it 57, it would be a decrease.
On those properties.
It wouldn't be a decrease on the improvements.
No, 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 but I'm talking about on the actual tax that we see. I think, I think it stays at the same rate, that's why I was asking. I know in years past, when we've done reassessments, that that question came up, and there's been some, you know, based on what's going on everywhere, some adjustment in those rates. I think we already check on that, at least, and see what they. I'm not trying to make, I know you've got all you can do, but.
Call the commissioner.
If those rates, if those rates need adjusting as well, that would be a little bit more. You know, if it's not time, or if it's, because that's really the only thing that we change in those situations. Just about. I get this like every year, so.
I mean, I don't mind calling her, if y'all want to talk to her.
Well, no, I mean, just find out if there's any information of those rates need changing, or been changed. You don't have to do it right now, just whenever, but if we do that for our late meeting, the other meeting would be bad, I would think.
Okay. Get her to come and talk to you all, give us all a refresher.
Y'all know how that works. Well, there's a couple of big increases, but I don't know that we help ourselves by reducing them.
My feeling is, we need to do an above across-the-board cut.
DSS and CSA.
I think they're pretty much locked in.
Yeah, we can't do anything with them.
Formulas or not.
Well, I think they're a projection of increased cost.
Given our circumstances, doing anything to CSA would be.
Well, that's what, that's what I'm saying, that's two of the biggest areas, but I hesitate.
I mean, you can't, you can't do.
I hesitate giving a leave in one of those, because being there, I know that it's a continuum, and since our glorious General Assembly deciding, Governor decided to put the first Family First program off to 2021, there's no, there'd be no relief there that we were hoping for.
And times like these can create even more problems, so, yeah, I mean, there would be certain things that you wouldn't touch, but I think across the board.
If we cut there to try and make up, I know.
Oh, yeah, we got.
There's no appropriation later, so they done game us.
Yeah, I mean, there are certain things that you can't touch, CSA.
The last I talked with Dr. Wheeler, I don't know if it was this week or Friday, I think, but anyway, the latest budget that he had seen, they're going to have like a $400,000 cut in statement. They're working through that.
That's going to hit them big time.
That may happen in a lot of areas, so.
Yep.
It may, it may, we may find ourselves.
Getting lots of requests.
Bad spot in a lot of different areas, and that's kind of what happened, what, 12 years ago, 2008.
2008.
They stated and afraid to cut and let us figure it out.
Oh, yeah.
He said, I'm going to try not to come back and ask for that $23,000 in debt service, I see.
They're not going to try asking for a cut, are they, either?
Yeah, and they're going to go back the old ways, it's going to be tough getting their quarterly payments out of the state for a while, too. Because we go out front everything, and even until they get around the real burdens.
I got one question on page 14, I'm sure. The VRS retirement, this went up considerably over the years, is that just a state formula, or is this the?
The state formula went up from 10.59 to 12.8 something.
Just looking at it, it's doubled over a four-year period, I just was looking at the, about it went up.
Part of it's new hires, but the other part, the rate went up significantly.
That's like $75,000 or more, it went up in a couple of years. Some of the deputies I've followed, I've looked, they're so good, I'd make them work forever, never let them retire. Justin Rich across the smack. Not this old one.
It probably would have gone down some this year with the retirements we've had, except for the rate came down.
It went up significantly, right?
Yep.
Up another 30,000, sure.
It was 10.459, and now it's 12.8.
That must have enabled the bar, right?
Yeah, probably. Yep.
I don't have my report with me, on the repairs and maintenance, on page 33, of our main plant. We got 125,000, we head to budget this year, 110, do you know how much we usually get out of that foot bar? If I follow that, I don't have my report with me, I should have brought it with me. Something to revise on that one.
Oh, okay.
Repairs and maintenance. We've got 110 in the current budget.
It's been 88.
That's where all the trash truck breaks down next year.
We still got a four to go. I'm just going to, I'm just going to look in at the bigger, longer, this is.
They were all free in the garage when I went over there this afternoon, they were all in the road. They said, two of the truck drivers were telling me that over the last month and a half where I spent time, their trash collection had increased by 50 percent.
No doubt, I figured it'd be higher than that. Crazy.
It's incredible, you know.
So the tonnage we're going to pay out.
Jody told me he called 21 ton Saturday, and he usually does about 12 or 13 on Saturday.
Well, hopefully, at least they're not filling it over the bank somewhere.
That's right. Say that'll count, it's the imperative in a 30.
The guys put their numbers in here, that, that, the numbers in this new one reflect that 5% reduction? Okay, all ready.
What's the latest report you've run, you're looking at 330? 331, is that what the date is on yours? Yeah, good. Cleanst ankle, yeah. Right. Yeah, it's still in 28. So that's going to mean our expenditure for tonnage is going to be more. So we're going to be spending more money there. Can't forget that.
That's what I told them, maybe everybody had gotten all their cleaning out, and they do, calm down during summer.
There's somebody who hasn't done any of that yet. Last weekend, so, for Buffalo Mountain, there's not as much coming in, out. But there for a while, every time you pass through them boxes, we just run it over. People throwing it up around the yard, it's going bust.
Of course, all the recycling guys are going out and helping.
Yeah. Yeah.
Pick up where the bear at the.
Over at Lip Bridge, Goose Creek.
Terry Ford Grocery.
Right, that's what I mean, yeah.
They had it looking good up at Buffalo Mountain running and all this wind. It all right back. So everything opens up to give jail crews on this.
If I would ask other departments to take cut, I'd take cut my supervisor's salad.
What's the timeline that we're going to use for getting this budget done? Do you have a plan as far as when we need to? June, that we're going, first meeting June, we're going to public carry it, so we're.
June 22nd is what you all have said. I gave you just the draft of the. Should we have advertised it the third day?
Right, that's what I was saying.
You'd need to be pretty set on the tax rate if it first made me.
First one.
And then have to have the budget.
Right.
And have the tax rate so that they can get their prices up and get them laid back and take all that out.
Yes, I think it's the last picture there.
We're still talking about August.
August 10th is what you all have said.
Keep thinking back on the custodial service again. The reason I thought about it the other day was I was talking to a gentleman that, not the gentleman, but not the folks that currently do ours, but just another company. And he was talking about how their work is, they were having a hard time finding any work because of the situation. People aren't looking to have people, you know, people come in their homes. So I guess I kind of wonder if that might be something, if we bid it out now, that it would potentially get a better rate. I don't know. There might be companies that are looking.
Yeah.
That are, that need the work.
Yep.
I don't know, it was just a thought. Again, it may come back higher.
It might.
I just thought about it when he was telling me what he was facing in his company. I didn't say anything to him about it, but it crossed my mind. I don't know, maybe even him just discussing it with our current folks, just a common situation. Maybe, maybe they would, maybe open to it somewhere in the.
He's calling it.
Or somewhere in the middle. I don't know.
Yeah.
I just think that the economic environment has changed for a lot of things. We need to try to save the dollar where we can.
I'll be glad to talk to him.
Just see what it says. I hope he doesn't drop it somehow.
He has been doing, this last month and a half, he's been coming every day. It's not just the two or three days a week and just affecting everything. They have to do more than I asked for from the extra.
Bad time to ask for. But, I mean, we, I think we're considering an increase. It's just a matter of how much it increases.
Right.
On the same page, our repairs and maintenance, you've probably explained this before and I forgot.
Which page?
On the 21. Just on our general property?
Yeah.
Is that, is there something particular that we see an increase there or just that's kind of what we've been seeing?
It's been spendable.
Spendable.
Several buildings to take care of.
Oh, yeah. And there, there goes. One thing I do worry about, I don't know if it'll be this year, but going forward on the electrical, auto electrical services. The potential with the bills coming out of the General Assembly this year to pretty much force different types of energy use in our production. Some of that, we could see some significant increases on, down the road. It might be five or 10 years from now. So those costs have stayed fairly level for a while, but we can see some.
You know, Baco and BML have that negotiation team that works with them. I know they're, that work in mail. For the next term.
I just worry about what's coming. The water and sewer went up again. What's up with that?
Yes, it's just a matter of how much.
Oh, gosh.
The world that people that, that has told us that we didn't have enough cash in the bank, as we should anyway.
Yep. Like thanks.
Unobligated funds.
Yeah, I was trying to sneak money under his general properties. And the travel meals and all that, I always spend $50.
Yeah, like a placeholder.
They don't, they stay for the cheap motel and
Yeah, right.
Eat pretzels and.
You don't have to do a lot of traveling.
Apparently not.
I had left a note on your, each of your budgets that Lina had recommended raising to 170, 20, 50.
Saw that. Lovely penmanship. I appreciate it. I see some of us can still write in Christmas.
And you can still read it.
And still read it, but you don't have that.
I didn't make the change because
Yeah.
She recommended it, but you haven't.
Right, yeah.
27. And we did establish that 170 was grant money.
Yes. We've now got it on the revenue side.
Yeah.
But she said there's going to be a little portion that the grant would not cover and.
You've got to have a little cushion.
And she said 185 would be what she'd be comfortable with.
We have, we have information on the other grant.
Are you all okay with putting that up to 185?
If I cut it somewhere else, I'll put it up to 185. She didn't have any idea once she hears from it, Grant.
But that, that grant there, is that for the?
It's the road utilities base deal.
Yes, that's a different.
Yeah.
That has a lot of money, a lot of other grant money that is riding on that, so.
Yep.
We pretty much have to do that.
Yep.
About $15,000 block is from getting.
Yeah.
No, you don't have to do.
Arc and getting 170.
Yeah, Arc and.
Yeah.
VDOT and. I'm in favor of that.
Just one, were you the other time?
He said two.
Yeah. That's we got to, otherwise we lose it.
Yeah.
You have to put it down there.
Okay, let's find out where we can cut it.
You sound so excited.
Not excited. I'm just being, yeah, I know, you can pick on me all you want, but. You know what I've said all from the start. I think we need to really be in an austerity type setting. And if that means cuts all across the board, except for some absolutely no touch areas like CSA, jail, obviously we can't touch that. But everywhere else. Unprecedented times call for unprecedented benefits.
Have we seen any, what's the latest sales tax numbers that you've had for this year?
What we gained, the budget was.
The latest they've sent us, it's been a Been a couple of months, hasn't it? That's, that's one of the things I worry about with.
Absolutely.
I've really, debated back and forth on how much impact it will have. Some people are shopping locally more, which may actually help.
Big paper clips. There was a box on the table here at one time.
I moved tomorrow night.
Oh, there they are. And chew. Pretty much.
That was the first thing I did, the cows and turkey staple.
Yeah, I know, that's what I just did. Hugging these peoples.
Sorry, I didn't mean to have to make you do it here.
It's been in the last month, I don't see.
Don't we have something in here?
No, it's something that came to me.
Oh, oh, gotcha. I mean, what do you even stuff like, do you have any blown in by the sheriff department or even down on our?
I wouldn't be able to speak for that, I'm sorry.
But, I mean, in general, because people aren't doing anything, roughly. Some people, I guess, are still getting caught doing stuff.
I wish it was that easy.
Yeah.
Yeah, almost.
Yep.
So do you still have that, that's the info you're taking on the public taxation? And the sales tax and.
I do.
And motor vehicle tax might go up. People buying new cars. Dodge has 0% interest and 72 months. It's a lot of months.
How many months?
72.
Some month, yeah.
Six years.
Four and one, were they? Three months. See, one month, one month was three, 0% 72, and I think they deferred a month.
It's crazy.
I've never bought a new car in my life.
Me.
All of them are doing something that.
They are, to stimulate. Yeah.
Good.
Sounds good, but I never bought a new car either.
Unfortunately, you still have to pay the front support.
Oh, yeah.
That's what it's about, me. I can rather buy a tractor.
I couldn't get past the thought of appreciation.
Yeah, I know, exactly $5,000 to get out of the, of the apron of the driveway.
Yeah, soon as you leave that lot.
Yeah, I know. It was dated March 17th. Little baby, they had.
A lot has happened in the last month. Feels like we've lived a year in the last six weeks.
Sure has.
Yeah, that was sales tax and that's recreation tax.
The contract assistance was this year. Get me a heads up on that, because it wasn't there last year. At the bottom.
On the economic development contract assistance.
Is that in association with things going on with the grants, or is that something that
It was to help us, because we are managing so many grants, to maybe get some contract assistance with like, marketing-type things.
I think, if I remember right, Dana also mentioned that potentially if you got into grants too deep, your might, the regional commission might be able to help.
That was part of, that was kind of what we were thinking for that money.
All right.
But Yeah, but we got credit. We've got fifteen grand in that line for grant administration for the regional commission.
That, that's for the project, right? But the, the contract as needed, it was new.
Yep. Absolutely a hundred percent necessary.
I wouldn't, I would not say a hundred percent necessary now. I would, I mean, if you were gonna, if you were gonna cut something, I mean, out of that, that would probably not hurt, that's not gonna hurt our functionality.
That's what I was giving.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I don't wanna, don't wanna do that.
Right.
That's not gonna limit our ability to receive or apply for more grants.
It will not.
They've been utilizing everybody else's.
No, I mean, that, that was just gonna
Did it keep your
Free us up, yeah, free us up more to do those, to do those things and be able to do other things, marketing ones, for the grants.
I don't know. We took all ten, it'd bring us only down to five, since it increased by fifteen. We'll leave twenty-five there. And if they need to, they can pull from some other spots. That would be my thoughts.
Well, and see, if we get those grants, the buildings, the roll-offs. Just right now, the three and five in there is the money we've all
Right.
We've set it, we try to pay that all by, or whatever you All the papers, get the bank allowance, allow them just to have, so we still have a place and a pretty great amount of grants.
Are they short on those? That's true.
Aren't we really short on those?
That's why I'm asking to cut that, probably cut it on the revenue essence.
We have waiting lists just to do all the time.
Cause I hear a lot of people, and I've heard from, I've heard complaints on that where I they're ready to start projecting.
Roll-offs, yeah. I've looked at that, I love that thing.
Yeah.
I love it.
Yep.
My son needed one and he had to wait.
That's how I would
Taken Hummer's, I'd deal, so.
Am I wrong, I think you're cutting that, you're cutting out some revenue on that.
Yeah, I think we, I think we would actually make money on spending that ten thousand myself.
I just wanna make sure I was understanding that.
That's how I would do my cleaning.
In over a year's
They get a room on it. Forget about driving it. We're talking thirty-seven years worth of stuff.
That contract assistance. That body right there is what we've all We take a ten hour right there.
Right.
Which page are you on?
I'm on page seventy-seven.
Yeah.
We're on about looking for
If you increase, if you
I want an accurate budget, though.
Yeah, no, EVA.
But see, what I'm thinking, we take it out, right, that three point five, we go through with that, that's a bar of money. Three point five right now. If we get the grants, that's gonna freeze something that way.
But it's still borrowed.
Well, it's still borrowed.
It has to be used for construction or something.
Correct, I don't think we could, yeah.
Well, is it, is all of it limited to the construction?
But you would use borrowed money to run
Yeah, to do a marketing, yeah.
Well, for one year, if I had to, to keep them going before we're saying
Cut somewhere else before I did that.
Well, it's just a thought.
Well, I feel like
Well, I suspect that money's limited to
You are changing? Yeah, I had to.
There'd have, there'd have to be some limitations on that.
No, I should, I should say fifteen, like fifteen. I would think we could take that out, and if they had to, they've got that line sixty-eighty-nine, that's got fourteen thousand in it for development, marketing, and promotion. I know they don't wanna use it but for that, but right now, I mean
The marketing metal, metal working as a tobacco commission?
No, 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 I didn't say that. No, no, the lineup above it, six eighty, sixty-eighty-nine, and they still have new opportunities that emerge, that's sixteen ninety-four. So I would like to, let's take out the contract assistance as needed. I'm just one person. Cause they do have other monies that they could move if they need to, to work on that. That's my thoughts.
Two. Three.
You got, you got one down here on the end of the table, too, that said yes.
I mean, I'm just saying, like
I was watching her.
Yeah.
She's gonna get you now.
I'm just trying to help you guys out. I'm just saying.
Is she watching?
She's not watching.
We'll have you eventually.
We knew that that, you know, was a request that
Well, let you nod your head, I know that I want you to get whipped, so I
Yeah, right.
We understand completely.
All right. Now I gotta find five.
Take a step forward.
Yeah. So what
Seven, seventy-five. Gotta find seven.
Yeah, I think we need to find a lot more to be perfectly honest with you, but Tell me what you did.
What's that?
It's us, you sins.
Good thing she's working it, helping.
Well.
I'm pretty sure she would agree.
We're just picking on
Yeah, no, I understand.
She's thankful. Whatever. Yeah, cut our salaries by five percent, we'd say fifteen twenty-five. Ten percent would be three thousand fifty.
Go back to where we were?
Well, five percent, ten percent, I mean, not quite, but not as drastic as you, but I don't know. We're asking others to do it, I think we've gotta be able to do it ourselves. And we're sitting here for the money.
Well, we could dump travel meals and lodging and pay for our own. That's four thousand.
Can do with that.
Me, too.
Out of ours.
It's not a bad idea.
Yeah.
Cause I would like for our committee to do something.
That's a lot of Yep.
I'm wondering if they even have
That's true. Yeah.
We could dump our travel and mileage and pay our own travel and mileage, too. That's another fifteen hundred dollars.
Thank you for the The thing is, I don't think that, I don't think that we can force someone to, like, for example, if I turned in my mileage as part of my duties, the other four of y'all couldn't force me to not turn it in, I think, is that right?
You can turn it in, but if there's no money for it, you're not gonna get a check.
I don't know, that's true. I'm not, I'm not suggesting we, I'm just saying, I'm trying to think through the legality of it.
Well, I don't know that we legally have to pay any of that. It's just always his bed. I don't know that there's any
I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
You're getting, you're getting a salary for the job.
Right, I'm just, I'm asking if
I've never turned mileage.
I haven't either.
Me neither.
So I don't have a problem.
I mean, I did for my
I'm just thinking out loud, if someone turned it in
No, I didn't.
Would be forced to
We could zero those out, and for now, she could get with Steve and see if there's any legal problem with zeroing that out.
I don't think there's any legal problems zeroing that out. I'm saying, what happens if somebody, let's say I have to go to DC for whatever reason, or the chairman has to go to DC, and he turns in mileage. Can we legally say, no, we're not gonna pay it?
I think we're in a different position with at least vehicle knowledge to utilize that.
Yep.
I understand that, I'm just, I'm just curious if legally
Right.
We have to or we're not.
But we provide, we have a vehicle, we can provide for such trips, for mileage.
But that would still come out of, I wonder if it would come out of
It's your gas.
The gas.
I think it'd be interesting to know, just legally, what we would, what we have to, what the board has to cover and what it wouldn't cover for our I'm curious beyond this.
Well, then, if gas is included in that travel mileage, just not reduced by five percent.
But, I mean, we take the county van and we fill it back up, it's going under admin, we don't have a line in for the supervisors for gas.
Right.
Just
It's always here.
Put it in no travel. I would just really suggest, before you get to all these drastic things, that we kind of wait on to see what happens with these proposals from the banks, financing. You're in a really good spot right now.
That's true.
We just wanna stay there.
Right.
Sure, sure.
Well, and I was referencing just our board of supervisors section, not the other sections.
Well, like your, your dues and subscriptions.
I just wanted to make sure, that's what I was looking at.
There's more times on, you know, my way here or my way home, when they stop at the store or pick something up, and, I mean, I just
Yeah, I'm never gonna take mileage.
I'm not either.
I just
Well, even like dues and subscriptions, we've got four thousand dollars in there, you've spent seven hundred fifty-one dollars, and you could cut a couple thousand out of that.
Well, let's take two out of that.
Easy, two.
Dues and subscription, cut it in half. I mean, we need to, like ever, ever, but
Dues and subscription.
It needs to have a little cushion in there sometimes, but
Well, we don't wanna come back to being the red.
Right.
What if, I mean, what if we just took our, our meals and lodging down to, you know, two thousand? I mean
Cut it in half.
I'm perfectly fine on, on our conference to pay our way. That's, to me, is
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think the board, if, if we're going to conference, maybe, maybe we should cover the the fee to actually sign up for the conference, but as far as like the rooms, I don't have a problem paying for my room because I'm a youth.
If you aren't on turning mileage, I would take it out of that, fifteen hundred.
That makes me What do we, what do we turn, what do we do, what have we done this year so far, on the mileage?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Yeah, none of us are taking it.
Travel and mileage.
Just mileage.
Mileage, mileage.
The mileage part.
Mileage part of it.
I think you're right, now that we have a dependable vehicle, I mean, that's
Yeah, nobody's taking mileage anymore.
So you're taking mileage out.
Yeah. Maybe add back the four right now and then take
Wait, which four?
Well, the travels, meals, and lodging, or go back up to two.
Put it to two, and the travel mileage.
Done, out, yeah.
Put it out, the fifteen hundred out.
Yep.
How much have we spent on dues and subscriptions?
Seven hundred
Seven hundred fifty-one dollars.
So we could do a thousand on that.
Well, I've done that market down two thousand.
No, I'm saying, do a thousand.
Two, one thousand.
Down two, one thousand.
Down three thousand.
Okay.
Right.
If I saw
Is there something else that we would
Well, that's sort of Matthew Bender things come out of, we always get a punt, a bunch of them right at the end of the year.
Oh, really?
I thought we'd already paid on them.
It seems like right at the end of the year, they still
Told me to do that.
I mean, I can see moving it down, but I don't know that I would go
Okay. So leaving it at two?
Two.
That's all the state code that makes subscriptions. Right.
Two thousand.
All right, two.
You need to take the travel.
Yep. To two. Put mileage out.
And drop the meals and lodging.
To two.
And that to two.
And then the dues and subscriptions to two.
What comes under miscellaneous expenses?
Well, we've already spent a little bit of everything, the, where we pay the bank for payroll, that deposit comes out, and that's only thirty dollars. All that's remaining is sixteen percent, seventeen percent, sixteen point nine, two percent as of the thirty-first of March, so we probably oughta leave miscellaneous.
Legal notices, we'd have to leave that, yeah. I'll tell you, what if we ever, if we ever have to do, where we're putting it in the running times, that'll go up significantly.
You had forty-five hundred for advertising, you already spent fifty-two hundred. Yeah.
Yeah. But, but if we ever have to do just our regular notices in the, in the running times, instead of foot press, it'll be
We outrate that.
But a lot of our notices, we just
Yeah, but sometimes we
I was in a committee meeting that, they were talking about some of the small counties that don't have a local paper, and are having to do it in like the Richmond Times.
Go, dude.
It's just, I mean, it's just, I mean, they were talking about ten thousand dollars or something. Eight thousand dollars.
I gotta, I gotta sort them out.
I'll have to do it every single time.
We got about ten minutes before the regular meeting, so we gotta wait for the adjournment till seven o'clock.
Got one minute.
One more thing.
Just to think about. I know we reduced the Fairview Home down, and we were talking about how many people it sent. There are eight citizens from Floyd County in the home now. Eight, eight citizens.
Okay.
Just food for thought.
Well, yeah, we might wanna think about that again now.
We need to pay for our own.
Are we on break, Tim?
Yeah. All righty, we'll go back in session and start our regular meeting. We've done dinner opening prior in the pledge, so we'll have to drop down the approval of the month-end disbursements. Anybody got a chance to look in over?
Everything is called monthly.
Yep.
I didn't see anything to get out of the party.
I'll move, we pay the bills?
Get a motion in a second. Any other questions? Call it.
Mr. Cook and
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Mr. Beattie.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Do we have anybody to send anything to the public comment?
Not that we know of.
All right. We'll drop on down then to county administrators' report.
First time, it's the approval of the six-year secondary road plan. Mr. Yoder had asked for a copy of current given money, and we ended up letting that on the side of the list. We'll look at it.
Is there a reason that it got changed from last from last year to this year's proposed plan?
Huh? What?
You said there was one one.
Yeah, the old one.
It was the bottom of the pile.
It's on very bottom, where there's a new patch of paper.
The one that was laying on the table for us, that new patch. Did you put that with your budget stuff?
I did take over a lot of them. That's the bearing behind the roof, so we switch.
Yeah, I don't know why that happened.
Did you have any comments?
He told me he had tweaked it, but he didn't say it was on.
Who tweaked, who tweaked it?
David.
David.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's not his...
The reason I ask is because I've been telling these people in ponderosa they're gonna be number two this year and that. Then when I saw the proposed one, I thought, boy, I've been made a liar on that one.
I wonder if they were having difficulty getting rid of one.
They've got it on Marv. All the stakes are out there. I was just going off the one we had, what, you know, what we've been going on. Normally, we just move them up as they come along.
I wonder if she just did a weird... Maybe they just made a mistake.
Well, I hope there might have been another change here too, but, um...
Yeah, there is. Reedsville.
That number two thing, if I'm looking at one, that's not being completed right.
Yeah.
That would move, um, ponderosa up to number three.
Well, mill run. Yeah, it's been, yeah, it's down to number three. It shouldn't, if we maintained it, it would be number two, if we maintained the order that we had last year.
Oh, okay.
All right, eight twenty, and then seven twenty-eight. Reedsville.
I remember the last meeting, he said Gorham and Questonberry were ready to go, and number three was ponderosa now. Because we were asked about Firehouse, and he said ponderosa's before Firehouse.
Don't believe.
You're all actually doing two things with this resolution, adopting the six-year plan, but you're also adopting the current year plan. That sense?
Right, right.
Right.
So those first two...
Right.
We're doing them this year.
So that's why ponderosa...
Will be next on the list.
Not Questonberry.
I just know I've been working on that one for a long time. I would love to see, I've been promising that this was the year to get it done. But it was, by the rate they were going at, that it would be on the, up to the top two, which normally we've been getting... On charter roads, we've been getting two done.
Because Mill Run is also just, I mean, they were gonna be getting that done pretty quick.
They were gonna do that themselves.
Yeah. So can we...
I'm thinking that it may have been a lot of money that's been put out per year.
He said something back before.
It was something, I'm trying to recall. You know, there's a certain amount of money that we get in this budget year.
Yeah.
He may have commented on two different occasions, I remember, because he's just kept saying that those first two, and I remember what Cindy was saying about ponderosa, because I was the one that asked about the Firehouse one, where it was.
Right.
And he answered, ponderosa would be in, and he said, and some response or some statement, but...
He said ponderosa was ahead of Firehouse, and the two that were ready to go were Mill Run and Questonberry.
Huh.
The other one that's been moved, I think, is Rogers been moved up considerably, hasn't it?
Um...
It jumped Starbuck and Hope, which, that's not my district, I'm just pointing that out.
Yeah, that's true, it did, didn't it? Why would they do that?
Probably some sort of reason why it's funded. This one's ready or...
I know Firehouse has been on there ever since I've been on board.
Yeah, well, so is Roger. Yeah. I mean, I'm not gonna bother with Roger, I'll leave Roger where he is. But it's just bizarre
Well...
how it's just so different.
Well, if it's a big problem, we can always wait our regular meeting and ask him, because this one, this one says, is dated June of August, so...
Yeah, that's what I started saying.
As long as we have it before July one.
Yeah, why don't we just defer it and ask him?
Come back on that.
Which one is the one where...
This one, the one that doesn't have her...
The date at the top.
Yeah, the one that doesn't have, the darker one is the one from this year, last year. Right, the darker one is the one that we're in currently.
This is the one where, that's the one where you're in right now.
Current year, current year.
And this is the one.
Yeah, that would make sense. But this is the one we're considering.
Correct.
Okay, so number eleven is Bear Ridge.
Right.
Which was last year deemed not to have enough traffic on it.
Right, it's almost like...
And they pulled it.
Yeah.
But they also didn't put on Look Ridge, which we added last year and replaced the Bear Ridge.
Correct, it's almost like...
I mean, I'm happy to have Bear Ridge on there, but last year he pulled it because he said there wasn't enough traffic on traffic count.
It really isn't.
In fact, there wasn't.
Sounds like we need to defer this.
Yeah, I think so too. It's almost like he pulled...
It looks like he pulled two years ago.
Yeah, it's like he pulled two years ago. Yeah, that's, uh, okay.
I mean, the folks on Bear Ridge would love to have it on the list if that's possible, but last year they said it wasn't possible, so...
Let's... Chaldu Fau.
I didn't even notice that when I read the first one, I was so focused on...
You and Bonanza. Oh, there goes another one.
Item B is a request from the school board for a, um... To accept the grant that they received, the seventy-seven thousand one hundred fifty-six dollars. This is the grant that, um, Mr. Tom, you all discussed with you all last month.
Right.
They had never asked for the official appropriation.
I would approve this appropriation, this is a great grant. Yes, we're not using it this year, but it's good to have in the coffers.
I got a message, so... Second, you are in discussion.
Mr. Yedder?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Cuthbert?
Yes.
Mr. Bev?
Yes.
Mr. Tom?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next item is a request for appropriation from the Capital Improvement Fund. They did have some, uh, damage from the last storm at the elementary on the roof. Uh, insurance did reimburse some, but, uh, what they're asking for now will help with the, uh, when we replace the roof too, this will already be in place. Is there...
I've been in construction a long time, so I'm honest, if there's a dump question, what is discovered?
I was helping you all, my dad did.
I've never heard of that term.
Angie, I looked it up because we've never heard of it.
Yeah.
It's a drain.
Right.
For a roof.
A term for the drain.
Drain on the roof.
Learning of the U.S.
Is there a problem that this is dated May eleventh, or... This request? It is in the future.
They're still using English.
I mean, is that a problem at all? It's dated May eleventh.
Oh, well, you thought we were gonna move it.
Right.
I don't know what to do.
That's not a problem, is it?
I don't see it as a problem.
Then I'll make a motion that we move the funds so they can...
Second. First, you're the second, you are in discussion. Hello?
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Cuthbert?
Yes.
Mr. Yedder?
Yes.
Mr. Bev?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Mr. Bev?
Yes.
Mr. Tom?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I'm sorry, I tried to catch you.
Timing issue.
Yeah, once or all.
All right. The next item is a vacant request for a portion of, uh... Former RV dot road that's discontinued now. This is a different section of that road from what you had the previous request for. You know, you don't need to approve anything tonight, it's just your consideration, you don't want us to start the investigative process and...
I want to defer that until I can talk today.
Okay.
Because there's some question about that bridge and, um...
It's pretty rough.
Yeah, it's a liability.
Yeah.
Is that the road you're coming up?
Yeah, I mean, we, I've got a lease on that place until the end of this month, so, we won't do it.
I was thinking that was the end.
After that, right?
Yeah.
See, you're the farmer, it's marking up the road.
No, I haven't, I haven't. Actually, roughly, the next county's already passed cattle law.
Jerry?
Even though he has a lease, it's a whole other discussion. But the one question I have, there is a cemetery up on top of the hill there. I know we can't block that, so that's the one thing.
They can either.
And he knows that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've already talked to him about that.
Yeah.
And Mr. Wilson's a lawyer, so I think...
Yep.
But that's one thing I want to make sure we...
So we're gonna defer this one too to the, um, RV dot stuff and be...
With the bridge, I mean, I do think this is a reason to be concerned, it's a...
Yeah.
I mean, it's a low ways up, and somebody fall off it.
It'd be...
Well... I have a question for him on that bridge, we need to go and check with Mr. Clark though.
I think the structure of the bridge is probably all right, because they had log trucks going over it.
The only thing wrong, the only thing that bridge needs is new deck.
Yeah.
Because it's actually still being, if you look...
They had, they had a log truck going over it not too long ago.
Lord have mercy.
If it had a new deck on it...
It'd be all right?
I'd deal with it, but nobody wants to put a deck on it because that opens it up.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
The last item is discussion of the possible ridge line ordinance. Supervisor Booth, I had requested that this item be placed on the agenda for your discussion. We also included a list of the various cell tower heights in the county.
I had asked for it because I know the one that you decided missed, y'all had discussed it. And there seemed to be some inclination to re-business, so I just asked for it to just be, if we could just leave it on the agenda. We, with everything going on, we don't have to talk about it tonight, but if we could just leave it on there, then sometime we can talk about it. But I know I still have a lot of citizens that want to see us do something, even though there's not a wolf knocking at the door right now, but... And that may be the time to really dig into it and look at it, but...
I think they're gonna be knocking pretty soon.
Yep.
Sort of getting ready to say.
The changes, like I referenced earlier, are gonna force Appalachian or whatever other company to put in wind turbines and...
Solar panels?
Solar, but I think the turbines in particular, if they come full permit, the horse is out the gate.
That's it, and... I'd explain to some of my constituents, and they look at me, and they say, this limits a height, it's not banning them. It just limits what height it can be put up there. So instead of twenty of them, forty to four hundred feet, you could have sixty of them, two hundred feet or whatever.
Right.
And it does nothing to stop if somebody decided they wanted to take and put a solar panel up on that ridge, or any ridge. It's just limits the very tall.
Right.
I'd really be interested in doing it if we could limit, I don't wanna, I don't wanna restrict any of our residents from doing something of the right.
Right, and...
So if somebody wanted to put up a sixty-foot one for their own personal use, I don't want to limit that at all.
Well, that's fine, it's for the cell phone tower heights.
Yeah.
Two reasons. I want to know what the average, you know, what the tallest one was in relation to what they're proposing. But also, if we're challenged in court, it's better to have something to reference, like, this is our tallest cell phone tower. At the time, we adopted disorderment, so we adopted this is the height, or whatever, or we do an average, or whatever. But if you just, we just sit down and say, well, what do you think about one hundred twenty-five? They, no, let's make it one hundred fifty. That's challengeable in court.
Right.
At least we would have something to reference back to if we, if we did go down that road.
Do you know what few ask for use on nerves at, uh, worst gap, is that still in the works?
It's still in the works as far as I know.
Yep.
And we may want Mr. Durbin to look at this again, since it's been a little while since...
Yeah.
Since he grew up.
Make sure there's no state code changes or anything, so we look at it.
That would be...
I mean, does...
I mean, would it be okay if she goes in and has him look at it?
Yeah, I would.
Oh, absolutely. Because technically, don't we have some above? What this, uh, or I guess not, because the three, that, but what if we drop it?
Well, the cell, cell towers are exempt anyway.
Right, I know, I know, they're exempt, I know.
I would just want those heights, so we could have some kind of numbers to look at, that wouldn't, because under the way the, when it went to public hearing or whatever, the way it was worded originally, before we got permission to change that height number. I know one farmer, he, where he was at, he wouldn't have been able to rebuild the silo if he had taken that.
Right, right, yeah.
And also, that limits, it would have knocked anybody out if they wanted to put a turbine to run their own home.
Right, right.
That's why I want the state change that to allow us to change the height, that's why...
Yeah, I, I really don't want to restrict individual citizens from, or farmers from being able to operate that tour.
Well, under the old, under the original, before they did it, if you took and built an authentic farmhouse with the wraparound porches and everything and all the heights, you couldn't have put, you couldn't do it. If you wanted to build one like the old styles.
I know someone talking about, if they wanted to build a church home, with steeple, a traditional steeple, it would have gotten closer.
Well, the steeple, churches were exempt, steeple were.
Why was this, why was this bottom one, the company and service provider, not listed on the permit? How did that happen?
Boo boo.
I mean, that's bizarre, because that's the one over there near, uh, Sweet Park.
That's Sweden.
Huh?
Next Sweden drive.
Oh, is that, all the way out there?
It's Verizon.
Oh. Why didn't they put the company, sorry?
I'll let Mr. Durbin check on that and get back to it.
Is there any, if we just kind of keep that on our attendance as we move forward, so we don't forget it?
I think we need to, I think it's something we need to work on this year.
Yeah, we don't have anything from constitutional office of Ben Aaron. So, we don't have anything from constitutional office.
Any other new business, anybody know that? Um, producers watching us on Facebook, it's gonna be a short meeting, you know, we've done tuck here and the majority of the meeting. From now on, we'll be in closed session, and we'll probably adjourn and see if we can come out in closed session. So we will be signing off Facebook right about now.